Huh? Okay, thank you.
Perfect timing.
Yes. Take my mother to the doctor today. She hadn't been in a year and a half.
Fifteen on Deloitte Radio. Gwen Asma Edwards, retired city clerk, former city commissioner, city of Daytona Beach. The Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards on Deloitte Radio.
And you've been sitting much too long, much too long. Welcome, 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 welcome to Truth, a radio program designed with you in mind. A program whose sole purpose is to empower you, our listeners, for information, leads to knowledge, and knowledge is. You got it, power. And as always, I want to empower you to take control of your life. Those things that impact you, your family, and your community, as always, too. Once you go to the website, www.gwen-truth.com, so you can access all those all-powerful links that will lead you to that all-powerful information concerning your municipalities, your county agencies, state agencies, federal agencies, and advocacy groups. Also, go there so you can take part in the poll that we have going. And the, um, the poll is asking you the all-important question as it relates to an amendment which you will be voting on. And, uh, that query is this, that many are predicting the passage of legislation to legalize marijuana use. Are you at all concerned about it getting into the hands of young people with harmful impacts? Yes or no? That's the query that we have up, and we'd love to have you chime in on that, you know? Give us, uh, your stand on that in terms of whether or not you are a little concerned about the young people and the impact of the passage of that legislation, that is, that amendment, which is amendment two. Shout out to all of those who are taking stands for, um, you know, what seems to be almost a rash in, you know, three, four does not make it a rash of killings of young black men, but, um, there is an issue there, there is a problem there that needs to be dealt with. And all of us who value life have to be concerned. So we would ask that you lift up all of those who are out there, um, not those who are taking, uh, you know, the law into their hands, but those who are prayerful, uh, the parents who lost their loved ones, uh, their young sons, the individuals who are trying to do the right thing and do it legitimately in terms of resolving the issues and coming up with answers. Shout out to them. Let us keep them in prayer, let us keep this country in prayer, uh, for we all need prayer. We all need, uh, to know that someone cares. And, uh, we do care about the life of individuals in our country. We do care about the liberty, the freedoms that they enjoy. There are times when people are wondering if they are still in America because of some of the, um, kinds of strongholds that are being used that keep them from exercising, they're given rights. And we all have those rights irrespective of who we are, where we live, uh, what our positions are, we all have rights and we have the, uh, should have the opportunity to exercise those rights. My guest tonight is an individual who's, almost at times, you know, Steve Miller. Steve actually is Steven, uh, Steve is short for Steven, uh, but on the ballot you will see Steve Miller, uh, and he's running for Daytona Beach City Commissioner, Zone Three. Steve is a previous, um, city commissioner, as am I. He's also a CPA, Certified Public Accountant, as is my older son. And Steve, I, one of the things that I constantly tell people in reference to that is that there is a limited number of minority certified public accountants.
Well, I'm not a public accountant. Uh, I spent years with Internal Revenue Service in the collection division, and I represent people who has collection problems with Internal Revenue Service. I was in charge of training for the southeast region.
Oh, okay.
So, collection hasn't changed since nineteen fifty-four, believe it or not. It's an awesome system. And, uh, I was, uh, one of the, in fact, I seized more property than anybody in the United States while I was with Internal Revenue Service, and I doubt anyone had beat that record yet.
Oh, wow. Geez, we gotta look out, all the way who hold on our possessions and watch it when Steve's around. But Steve, in that, uh, you actually have been in the seat. It reminds me of the question people ask me when I had been city clerk for fifteen years, and they said, you know, you know what goes on behind the scenes, you know what's involved in all this stuff, why in the heck would you want to get in the midst of it? You've been a city commissioner, you know some of the heartaches and frustrations, uh, that are involved in being in office. Why are you running again?
My number one reason, why, is because of young kids in our community. We have no after-school program and school getting ready to start again, and we haven't had for the past two years. We have so many gangs now, they say, the police chief says seventeen gangs, about four of them are female gangs. But when you don't give kids something to do, they find something to do. They see, uh, out of mind is the devil's workshop. So I think as a community, we're robbing our kids, we're cheating the kids of the opportunity to succeed. When you don't give kids opportunity, you, you set them up for failure. And athletics and sports, after-school program, you know, the after-school program, uh, it helped, well, it helped you from committing a crime, it helped you from being victim of a crime, and, and, and in fact, it helped you with your homework. And the statistics show that kids who are in an after-school program have a higher percentage of finishing high school. Right now, we have a problem in this whole community, not this community, this entire state, and this entire nation. Our children are not getting an education, not even a high school education. And there's a lot of factors that have to play. But again, we have a lot of kids in our community who are, who belong to a single parent, a mom, and she's out there working for a minimum job, not enough to support her, and she can't handle it, and she's, she's working all the time, and the kids are home by themselves, and we're doing absolutely nothing, but we're making them a statistic. See, right now, there is Vanguard, who, who this investment companies, they're actually giving folks money who opens up these institutions to, to, to holler young men. And it's a business. So our kids happen to be in inventory right now. They're product, it's almost like a cattle. They're raising the cattle. And in fact, statistics show, and we know for a fight, that we can take a kid on the third grade level and tell whether or not he's going to prison. And if we know that, Gwen, why we're not doing anything to stop that? Remember back in the days, we had the Pell program? And the Pell program was one of the most successful programs we've had in the inner city ever. And what did they do? Because Pell was saving a couple of these guys, they decided, we're not gonna fund them anymore. Isn't that amazing? We are no longer funding programs that was very, very successful. That's like not funding Head Start. It, and, and it's the same intelligence, so what they're saying is that we want, we want to set them up for failure. There is no sports in middle school. So here this kid has absolutely nothing to do, no athletic program, and here it's a city of sixty-four, less than sixty-five thousand people, Gwen, and there's not a Little League baseball program in this city. There's no T-ball in this city, there's no soccer in this city, there's relatively nothing if you're female in this city. In fact, Gwen, back in the days when I came to Daytona Beach, there was adult softball and baseball going around all over the city. Now, we have so closed, covered up most of our baseball fields. In fact, even the Dickson, not the Dickson Center, the, uh, Midtown Redevelopment Center, in the proposal, they were supposed to put a baseball field.
Yes, they were.
Have they put the baseball field back there? No, you know what they put back there? They put a basketball court back there. You know, all our kids can do is play basketball and play football in the city of Daytona Beach. You know what? We have the LP, we have the, the Golf Association, the Golf Program. And you know what? How many of our kids play golf? We have the United States Tennis Association. How many of our kids play tennis? You know what? More people come to Daytona Beach and deal with Bethune Point and play baseball with the AAU more than the children who live in this city, and it is a disgrace. So you ask me why I run? Gwen, I wanna say, if I could say one, just one, just one God's little voice, and maybe that one would make the difference, that could change this whole community. But guess what? You know what? We're looking right now, the world is looking at the Little League World Series. You have never seen a, a team from Daytona Beach even attempt to go to the, to the World Series. In fact, you can't attempt to go until you have a program, and we don't have the program.
And, and our, our young people for baseball are going to Ormond Beach, Port Orange.
Exactly. In fact, some of our officials, in fact, one of our commissioners, Gil, Gilalani, he's, uh, participate in Port Orange. Did you hear that? In fact, believe it or not, most of our commissioners don't have any children, believe it or not. You know, Lex has no children, uh, Hallery have no children, and, and, and Keller White has no children. So when I'm talking about programs and, and creating different things, they can't sit because they don't have any children. And it's, it's hard to relate the children when you don't have any children. You may think what's going on, but you have no clue unless you've been there. I have four kids, four awesome kids. In fact, the last one is Angel. She will be graduating from medical school in eight more months. In fact, on her birthday, May twenty-ninth of fifteen, and, and she'll be turning twenty-six years old. So I'm just thanking God for it because, but I do realize it takes, it takes a community to raise a child. Even with my children, they was in, Gwen, they was in Port Orange. They had to go to Port Orange for organized youth sports. And that's a shame because youth sports teach kids so many things. They teach a teamwork, how to work together, they teach them how to, how to work on a goal, and they, and they teach you that when you fall down, that you can get back up, and there's always another game, there's always tomorrow. And you know what? They can dream.
And you know that we have, um, we have a, a Little League, um, football team, you know, that goes begging to the commission every year.
That's right, that's, that's, that's the, uh, pump water program.
Yes, yes.
They want them to pay seven to ten thousand dollars to use the Derbyshire Field.
And it doesn't matter how many kids, they can have one kid, three kids participate, and they still gotta pay the same amount of money.
But here's, here's another irony, Gwen. They have approximately three hundred to four hundred of our kids playing football. And in fact, we're giving the, the, we, in fact, we're giving the Boys and Girls Club half of the Dickerson Center, and they got thirty-five kids in their program. Can you imagine that? And we paying for the insurance, we paying for the cleanup of this business building? In fact, we wanted to give our entire recreational program to the YMCA. They wanted to outsource our entire recreational programs to somebody else because they don't wanna take responsibility.
Or hire the people necessary.
Or hire the people necessary.
And the other program we have, which is a world-class program, uh, and that's our track program.
Absolutely.
You know, and there are employees that came from the Recreation Center who actually helped to run that program. And they called hell, I hate to put it that way, but they did. And what they were trying to do. And now, you know, we want to, when they win, we wanna put them up there and say, oh, we applaud what you do. When you didn't have them a darn bit while they were raising money to go on.
They don't have five kids on the track team. Before, we used to have two hundred kids on our track program. But see, that's telling you.
The parents can't afford to pay what it takes to, and they're getting no support.
And the new policy, the new policy for my city manager is this, if you can't pay, you don't play. I'm gonna say it again, if you can't pay, you can't play.
And, and they hear the same thing from the school system.
You hear the same thing from the school system. So these kids have absolutely nothing, and we wonder why they out there trying to sell drugs? You know what? Their mamas make less than minimum wages. She have to work two jobs just to try to pay for the, 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 the deodorant, because most of them are, in, in fact, Gwen, twenty-six percent below the poverty level is the city of Daytona Beach. We're not talking about the inner city. And see, of course, I represent the heart of Daytona Beach, you know, the midsection of Daytona Beach, almost from Seabreeze, Seabreeze Bridge to Silver Beach is an easy way of saying, that's where it is, from, from almost Lincoln Street all the way to the ocean. So we're talking about the heart of Daytona Beach. But we're talking about twenty-six percent below the poverty level. And when you look at the real folks in the heart of these areas, guess what, Gwen? You'll find fifty-eight percent below the poverty level. But she got to pay to play. No a's and buts about it.
Daytona Beach has one of the lowest average income levels of
Absolutely.
any city in the county.
And we're not growing. Can I tell you why?
And that, and that's lower than some of these really small, that used to be, you know, areas where the income was so low.
Gwen, they love to bring in the hotels. And see, they, they go all out for these hotels to bring in jobs that pay only minimum wages. Did you hear that? And see, so what a sick of the minimum wage jobs right now. But you know what? There's a lot of blame that go around, but we have to come up with solutions. And like I said, you know what? They stated, they, they got rid of the after-school program because the cost meant from fourteen thousand to fifty-eight thousand, they say, I haven't seen the paperwork yet, and they're supposed to be getting that to me. But Gwen, fifty-eight thousand, look how much we give to other people. Look how much we give to business people who don't live in this city. And you know what? I love the race strike, but we gave twenty million dollars for Daytona One, and I'm quite sure it gonna be wonderful, it gonna be a lot of, lot of jobs, it gonna hire people minimum wage jobs. Did you hear me? But, but here it is, we can't invest nothing in our children. You know what? It's amazing to me, we get grants to people, we, in fact, for instance, we even allow somebody, we paid one point nine million dollars for some property over on the beachside, another three hundred thousand dollars to demodest the building, and if we have two point, two million dollars in the property, we sell it for around twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, there are a lot of people in the city, especially on the beach side, I still upset about that one.
Bro, you what? That's, you know what? Somebody's real good, and you know what? They say it was legal, but when you're making less than ten and twelve, Gwen, I have an income tax practice in the middle of the city, so I'm dealing with, I'm dealing with baby and her children every day. And I see the income types, the W-two forms that come in with six and seven and eight and nine and ten and twelve thousand dollars per year. That's the total income with four kids. Can you imagine trying to raise a family of four on eight and nine and twelve thousand dollars annual income?
And then they wanna kill their opportunity to get healthcare coverage for those who are not considered poor enough.
Isn't that amazing? They're working poor. And, 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 Gwen, I met a young lady the other day, and I won't even mention her name, but this girl said, Steve, you know what? I got so sick and tired and sick and tired outside, I go to school, so she went, the college, she went to one of the colleges, and she got her BS degree. In fact, Gwen, she just received her master's degree. Do you know she can't even find a job?
Yeah, because
You know what?
The shame of it is, you know, you, you have to get a bachelor's degree just to be equal with everybody else, but then you get your masters, and then they say you're overqualified.
It's amazing to me, it's amazing to me. And, 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 and I think about the number of kids, and we have a program this summer, the YES program, and thank God for the thirty kids that they was able to get in the YES program. But you know what? We have the Daytona Regional Chamber of Commerce. Why couldn't we have five hundred kids? You know what? See, like, we can have enough corporate sponsors, in fact, we help some of these business people anyhow, they get their money because of what we bring to the city. See, we advertise and bring folks to Central Florida into the Daytona Beach area, and when they love it, they move to Ormond Beach and Port Orange and even Holly Hill. They don't live in Daytona Beach.
All of them benefit from the same state, based on population.
They, they, they base upon it. But guess what? We suffer. We paying all the different prices for all of this stuff. We treat our, we treat our residents like dirt, like second-class citizens. We don't even respect them. We won't even help them, we don't help their children. And you know what? It's Gwen, we have a lot of grandmothers and great-grandmothers raising children in this community. Gwen, we have a lot of homeless children in this city. And what do we look at this homeless? Oh my God, you know what? The word of God said, what you do to the least of these, you do it unto me. You know what? This city should be ashamed of itself. In fact, right now, you better not go downtown pushing a budget. I'm telling you, it's the quickest way to get locked up in this city is to, to be poor. You know what? And, and, and isn't, isn't it a crime to be poor in the United States right now? I think it's a crime to be poor. They, they treat it almost as a, a crime, they locking people up. In fact, my dear friend, Hebrew Graham, so big, Judge Graham said, we used to lock people up for eating out the garbage can, and he used to throw them out of court all the time. You know, that's amazing to me. We're gonna lock somebody up for eating out the garbage can? In fact, my attitude is, if the man hungry, feed him, just like the word of God says. And that's what we should be doing. And I run because I think that we can make this city a whole lot family-friendly. In fact, you know what? People should be first. Our number one resource in this community is the people that live here. Yes, we have a beautiful ocean, yes, we have a beautiful river, yes, we have the awesome scenery, we got the race strike, and we got, we, it's so much natural beauty here. But the most important thing about Daytona Beach is, is residents. And you know what, Gwen? I truly believe that people makes a difference. See, people win elections, you can have all the money you want, and see, I'm running against a millionaire. She was born with a silver spoon in her mouth. In fact, not only she was born with a silver spoon in her mouth, she had learned how to, how to play the game and get more from the, from the least of these. See, my point, when I think when you run for public office, you should try to help the people succeed. You should be trying to help yourself succeed and your family. Do you know what? I don't know too many people net worth have gone up, but I know one in particular who's gone up, and we have helped that individual. And see, enough is enough. You know what? You keep doing the same thing over and over again, that's insanity. And, and, and my point is, how can the world, this rich individual represents so many poor people that has no conscience, don't care about their children, all they care about is themselves? And you know what? It's obvious. Do you know what? Daytona Beach do not have a Parks and Recreation Board, a Leisure Services Board. Gwen, name me another city that doesn't have a Leisure Services Board, a Parks and Recreation Board. Can I tell you why they don't have one, Gwen?
Please share.
Gwen, the reason they don't have one is because parents would begin to make decisions about what type of sports and what type of activities their kids would participate in. And most of these boards also deal with the, 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 the fields that we have, how much we gonna rent them for, what we gonna rent the, the, the sellers for the Midtown, uh, the, all of the different parks in the area, Autona and stuff. They don't want that because why? They want to micromanage. It's easy to cut programs when you have nobody looking. You understand? That's what's going on right now. When we got one individual, or just one in a, and I, we, we have two individuals, the city manager and the Leisure Services Director, making these decisions about our children. And sometimes, I don't think those folks care about our children, and it's obvious. Until they can prove something better, because, you know what? You can tell by the money, the, the budget for leisure services have been going down, it haven't been going up.
Right.
You can just look at it. They have no staff to cover the buildings that we have. We have two beautiful structures, you know, that they just purchased, six million dollars or plus, the one at the Golden Center and the Midtown Redevelopment Center. And it's great, but the only activities we have is a open gym. I saw this kid the other day, he was trying to rap. I said, hey, bro, why don't you check out the Midtown Center? We got a beat room now where you can go in and, and practice your rap, rapping. The guy said, are you, are you out of your mind? Do you know I cannot afford to go there? Nobody can afford to go there. So Gwen, I'm asking, I would love to see how many people have participated, even I went out and bought all of this awesome equipment, and our babies can't even use it. So where do they, where do they succeed at? So some kid may not be that great in school, but he may have natural talent and ability. We doing absolutely nothing to help that kid foster or nurture those skills so that he can be the best that he can be. I thought that's what community was all about, and that's what I'm running for. And I'm gonna shut up and allow you to ask another couple of questions. I've been running all over the place, but, but you know what?
But you're right, you're right on target though, yeah.
I'm passionate about this, you're not him, I'm very, very passionate about. We got to do something for these children. We can no longer, we cannot continue to lock them up. And what happened? We continued, I, I probably saved the budget, keep going up and up and up and up. My point of this, why don't we do something proactive? Why can't we invest on the front end so that we don't have to continue to pay so much on the back end? You know what? I truly think Ormond Beach and Port Orange care greatly for their children. But you know what?
But their citizens hold them accountable to this.
Their citizens hold them accountable. You know what? They wouldn't dare, you know what? Somebody told me, when I first got into politics, or I was an activist, they said, you know what? Two things you don't mess with, you don't mess with the church, and you don't mess with people's children. And so I'm saying to, to, to the commissioners of Daytona Beach, you don't mess with the people's children. So I'm, I'm the people's candidate. I'm the candidate running to do something to help our children. And you know what? And everybody at the sound of my voice, I would really appreciate you to help me to help our children, because there is nobody up there seeing this here. Even though we have quite a number of educators, in fact, we got one of them who's a child counselor, but you know what? Why is it? We haven't been able to pass a Parks and Recreation Board where the commissioners can appoint somebody from the neighborhood and see what's going on. Because, you know, believe it or not, we have a city manager former government. This city manager runs the day-to-day affairs. The commissioners give leadership. Let me say that again, the commissioners should give leadership to the city manager.
Right, because we actually have a council manager form.
Absolutely.
We currently have a city manager form.
That's right. Do you know what? I saw, I saw a memo from him the other day, he was giving to the staff, he signed his name, J.C. You know what? Mr. Chisholm, you are not Jesus Christ. I'm serious. But when you try to act like you're Jesus Christ, and, and it's a shame, it really is a shame. And in fact, Gwen, I was talking to some folks the other day, and do you know, the city of Daytona Beach just came off of probation with the, with the, uh, Department of Environmental Protection because of the sewer and the, and the, the water going back into the ocean? It is a shame that we don't even care about the environment, our beautiful resources, our rivers, man. We're, we're allowing this to go back into the ocean. What a shame. You know, and the folks over there in, in, in West Volusia, they could use water for the fern grows and whatever, we really need to, to send that, that treated water so that we can actually do something with it to help grow the crops, so we don't have to worry about a drought. We can do that, we really deserve to do that. In fact, we should do it for ourselves.
I agree with you. You know, uh, Steve, one of the things I think that a lot of people don't know about you, uh, when you were a city commissioner, you actually came up with a way for the city to make recurring funds, have recurring funds coming into the budget. And that was your suggestion that, uh, they actually, um, tax, maybe the tax is not the right word, but, uh, that small businesses out of the homes
Home-based businesses, right. Our advocates.
Yes, yes.
Do you know what? You couldn't have a home-based business before, you know, we came up with that, 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 that policy. Only in the Pelican Bay area is the only place that you could have a home-based business. So I, I found that was so ridiculous. Here it is, we don't wanna pay you for working here in the city of Daytona Beach, and we're gonna deny the folks to have the opportunity to succeed. You know what? America is about, a land of opportunity, so that people can, can do better. And if you prevent them from doing that, you keep them in bondage. I'm serious, Gwen. And, and you know what? I'm sitting right now on the Midtown Redevelopment Board, and, and someone's a joke. You know what? Gwen, we have no tax base, there is no funds whatsoever in the Midtown Redevelopment Board, so we have absolutely nothing. And catch what? Downtown Daytona Beach is about three or four blocks, and they got all this money, all this money, and most of the people that, there don't even live in the city. Something need to change, I'm telling you. The definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing over and over and over again. And remember, Gwen, I am not anti-business, I'm a businessman, and I know every community need business. And the reason those people came to the city is because of the residents and the citizens of Daytona Beach who patronize these folks. So my point of this, why do you treat your residents so badly? And that's what I want to change on the Daytona Beach City Commission. Uh, I'm convinced we can get it done. The kids deserve it.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. And a lot of the issues that you have mentioned, people can take it to the bank. What you have stated truly is the truth. Now, the way people deal with people, the big-money people deal with people who don't have a lot of money, but are trying to make a difference, is that they find things or find people who can file complaints, et cetera, and, uh, try to, uh, stigmatize, try to, uh, Try to, uh, really, uh, damage the name of that person that's running. Uh, and you recently have been in the paper regarding your residency. Could you enlighten our listeners in terms of, uh, some of the, the actions that have gone on from the time you filed to, to present?
Well, you know, Gwen, uh, I, I, I'm in it. I have a court case coming up. In fact, somebody told me that I'm gonna be in court by Wednesday, emergency year, to get my name off the ballot. You know, I understand politics and I understand what the rich do. They use the legal system to try to beat the little man down. And, 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 and that's how, how they do it. But Gwen, you know what? I believe in God. I really do. And no weapon formed against me shall prosper. I've been there and done that. But you know what? He rescued me from all of these things. I'm not running because of self-serving. You understand? I'm not trying to make money. I'm not trying to, to create more wealth for me and my family. I'm not trying to do that. I'm here to try to represent these children so that we can help them to succeed. And be able to, to make millions of dollars, but not pimping the people. I want them to be able to get the education so they can, and, and give them opportunities so that they could succeed. Where they won't commit crime, where they won't be victimized over crime. But some people, they file, they have folks to file suit against you. And they, they wanna tell me what's my residence. And so my point of it is, I'm looking forward to my day in court. And I don't blame, uh, the, the, my, my opponent for trying to do the trickery. It's a shame that she have to deal with her record of what she have not done. She know what she told the citizens of Zone Three, what she was gonna do when she ran against Sheila McKay. My point of it is, let's take a look at the track record. You know what? The numbers don't lie. I have not seen one initiative that she come up on her own. She have not led the drive on anything, uh, but she have talked about why the sidewalks, and they do need to be widened. You know, the only person I know who benefited since she been in office is her and her husband. I'm telling you, their income have gone up. Oh my God. Too much. And the people have gone down. And she's gonna actually make us pay more taxes, amazing to me. But you know what? I'm looking forward to my day in court. I can't talk about the case. My lawyer says, Steve, you know, you, 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 you need to allow us to do what we need to do. But this is what I will say. I don't blame her for not want, wanna meet the people and tell them all about what she have done in her four years. And how she have enriched herself and her family since she been the city commissioner of Zone Four, uh, Zone Three. In fact, have you been by the new product, project they doing on, on Palmetto, uh, my Palmetto right now? Gwen, it's beautiful. I wish you could look at the, the, the curb and it goes into her development. It is gorgeous. You know, she got a nice grant from the city to do that as well. You know what? The city have made her so much more wealthier than she was. And she was very wealthy before.
I think the city even paid to clean it up.
And I'm quite sure they gathered for dirt for almost nothing. You know what? I could have paid the twenty thousand dollars for that two million dollar piece of property they bought over there, three blocks from the ocean. And it's a shame. And you know what? And guess what? Twenty thousand, and by the way, somebody told me, Steve, they also gonna share in their profits when they sell this, you know, this property. Oh, really? But they haven't. In fact, they haven't even started building. And I don't even know how long they were supposed to before they build a. I have, but I'm looking into that. But we'll stay tuned with that one. You know, my point of this, hey, I want y'all, when you see her, ask her. How much her income going up while she been on the city commission? Ask her, would you teach me how to get all this money from the city of Daytona Beach? You know what? When you get, when you get information, you should share it. That's what somebody told me. Why have all this knowledge of how to, how to get all this grant money and get the city to give you property that they spend two point two million dollars? That's a skill that I would love to know. So you know what? For these people who make it twenty-six percent below the poverty level. Kelly White gonna have a conference and she gonna teach you how to do it. Isn't that wonderful?
It is awesome. Really, you know, because they said, what is this, uh, this thing that they say about rather than giving people the fish? You know, you need to give them some fish too, but also teach them how to fish.
But you don't take their hook and the line.
Hey, you got it. You got it.
It's hard to catch fish when you ain't got no hook, no line and no pole. And you don't have no net to throw out.
And it's like pulling people up, uh, people pulling themselves up by their bootstraps. But if you don't have no shoes with no bootstraps, what are you gonna do, right?
Your feet cut off.
Hallelujah. I wanna encourage people now, uh, Steve's, the office he's running for will not be on the, uh, August twenty-sixth ballot. The primary ballot because there are only two people running. Those that are on the ballot for the primary, of those that have more than two people running and it's considered like a runoff. Those that get fifty percent plus one will be declared a winner. Uh, those that don't, the top two vote getters will be going into the general, onto the general election ballot in November.
And if you have enough money, you can try to file suit and get somebody kicked off. And the judge can make that decision. And the taxpayers don't have to vote. Isn't that amazing? And you know what? What a democracy.
And normally judges will do everything they can to make sure that doesn't happen and to ensure that it's the people who make the final decision as to who will represent them. Uh, they really will bend over backwards to do that. Uh, so we will stay tuned in terms of that, uh, Mister Miller.
I'm gonna continue to be co- and be encouraged, my friend. I, I, I have pleaded the blood. And I know that no weapon formed against me. And, and I'll come back, you know, to talk about what happened in court. You know, one way or the other, Gwen, I'll promise you I would come back.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. I did wanna tell the people too who are voting absentee, uh, Steve. And I don't know if you've heard from some people regarding this, but some people are forgetting to turn their ballot over. Uh, because the issue as to extension of the sales tax for the school system, uh, is on the back of the ballot. So if you've already voted absentee and you didn't turn your ballot over, so you forgot to vote that way. Uh, if you haven't turned it in yet, you can hold on to it and take it to the polls, okay? Uh, turn that absentee ballot in and you can vote at the polls so that you're able to have input on that. But if you've already mailed it in, it is too late for that. But those of you who have not yet received your absentee ballot or you're holding it to decide how you're gonna vote, remember to turn your absentee ballot over on the back. Because that's where the issue is. At least that issue, maybe other things, but at least that issue regarding the extension of the sales tax, uh, to help the Volusia County Schools in several areas that, uh, that they need. Uh, early voting also, uh, that's two weeks out from an election. And know that only ten of the fourteen days are you allowed to early vote. Because the weekend before, uh, the election, uh, they do not have voting. And that basically is a decision by the, each of the supervisors of elections in the counties, in the state. They get to decide the days that they want to be open. They get to decide the hours as well. And as far as I know, they will not be open that weekend before, correct?
Absolutely. That's a very good clue too. You understand? You know, a lot of people used to go to church and just leave church and go and vote absentee ballot. So they decided, you know what? Too many people is going to, we wanna, we wanna stop that. We don't want people to participate in the process. The less people participate, the better it is for those folks that got the money. They can buy an election. But I re- I come against that and I rebuke that. You know what? We want the people to decide on elections. And that's what it's all about. That's what America is all about, you know?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and the more, the more people vote, the better it should be. But I know that's not the, the way that most people wanna see it happen. Let me just say, you're listening to Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. This is W L E thirteen eighty AM on your radio dial in Orange Beach, Florida. Also B I G thirteen eighty AM. Uh, and we're happy to have all of you with us. My guest tonight is Steve Miller, who's running for Daytona Beach City Commissioner, Zone Three. And Steve has, uh, spent the last, um, thirty-plus minutes sharing with us why, um, why he want, why he is running for this office. And, uh, a major need that the city of Daytona Beach has, and that's in doing more for the neighborhoods and more for our young people. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did. And accountability. See, we wasting a lot of money, Gwen. My point of this, we spending all this money and we're not spending it for the people. We giving it to other folks. And, and we end up doing all these studies. You know what? We there with the red light cameras and all that kinda craziness and the location of the red light cameras. But this commissioner is, 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 they're not proactive. You know what? Uh, in November, guess what's on the ballot? Medical marijuana. And, and, and right now, it polled at eighty-eight percent passing. What have the commission done to begin to deal with that issue? They wanna wait. You know, wait, why wait? You know, we're gonna make decisions of what these dispensaries gonna be and how we gonna be operated, how we gonna transport these things. I think it's something that the city should be proactive about. But like I said, if the city manager don't bring it up, it doesn't get stated. It's this agenda. And see, and that's the wrong thing. And Gwen, one of the first things I would do if I was elected, you know what? And, and, and a lot of the commissioners don't understand that they can own it in a department in this city. And, and, and even swear people in. And I would love to take care, I would love to do that with the leisure service department. Because we've lost a lot of money on that golf course and that tennis court. And see, my point, why continue to dump money when, you know, down a toilet? And you know, that golf course owes over four, almost four million, five million dollars. The, 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 the tennis courts, about two mil- two million dollars. And they just save, you know, sixty dollars or something to that affair because they don't count the city staff that have to go out and do what we have to do. We paying that deal. And see, they act like it's not our money. It is our money. And, and, and they wanna raise the taxes because they're mismanaging for us. In fact, Gwen, there's a lot of property that we actually been buying up for a whole lot of money and selling and giving away to their cronies. For nothing. Can you imagine? We spent two point two million on that property and gave it away for twenty thousand dollars? You know what? The, 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 the crab shack. We actually spent another seven hundred thousand. And we gave them a parking lot and they gotta fix it. It's a private parking lot for, for their employees. My point of this, we can't afford to do that. We don't give it to our residents. Why give it to these other folks? It's a shame that they do that, you know? And Gwen, you know what else too? And I am truly against them stopping us from driving on the beach. Daytona Beach is such a unique community. We are one of the few places on the planet that I know that you get to drive on the beach. So we need to continue to let folks drive on our beach. And like I said, the city looks wonderful. The beach side look great. You know, what? Daytona One is doing wonderful. Uh, the inner cities, you know, on both sides of the river. We really need to pay a little bit more attention. We do have lighting areas in our neighborhoods. We have to. I've been walking the neighborhoods, winning. And, and you know what? We can do better. I know we can do better. We really can. And even the planning of the city, I don't know what some folks do in the city. We pay a lot of folks a lot of money. And I want to have an accounting. I wanna see what they do. And, and see whether or not it's worth the money that we spending for them. And, and, and we have a city manager. At one time, he was applying for a new job every week. You know, my point of this, the guy wanted to get out of here that bad. I would have helped him myself. I really would have.
That was before the elections.
That was way before that.
Now it's pretty happy.
Right. And, 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 and Gwen, someone told me that, we can't get rid, you know, they told me that four votes make you hold on to Daytona Beach City Commission, meaning that you got four votes from the commission. You can always do anything you want to except get rid of a city manager by the name of J C. You have to have a super majority. How did they negotiate that? And, and how long does that contract last?
Until they terminate it.
Really?
It's ongoing, yes.
Wow. What amazing. What happened to the four vote rule? Does the charter allow that to happen?
Well, they tried to insert that into the charter where, uh, it would be just a simple majority to get rid of the city manager. But, uh, the charter review commission, charter review commission decided they did not wanna take that up or pass it on to the city commission.
I wonder why. That's the get old boys system, right?
Uh, and the citizens were the ones requesting that.
Nobody listened to the people. You know, but this is the few times in a, in, in, in several years that the people get a chance to let their voices be heard. That's when we have city elections. By changing the city election, you know, I'm convinced. If Steve Miller gets elected, or when Steve Miller gets elected, it gonna be great days in the city of Daytona Beach. I'm telling you, it going to be a whole lot better for the community, for the residents. We gonna be a whole lot more family-friendly. And by the way, you would know that you can come up in charter city hall and city hall will listen. In fact, I think my job is to help when people have to, not kinda upset those individuals. And most important, I wanna represent people. That's my, you know what? I would never ever make a decision without thinking about the citizens of Daytona Beach. I don't care what interest group it is. See, most of the folks and just like the children, they don't have an interest group. And so commissioners don't listen to them. They listen to those folks who make these nice contributions to them. And they say, oh, it gonna be okay because they feel that they can buy an election. I think that our zones are so small that you can talk and touch the people there. And that's what I'm doing, Gwen. I'm doing a campaign. And I really haven't raised any money. I don't know, man. I've been signing these waivers, man. You know? I don't know if I put something on there, they may wanna audit that too. You know, so I've been waving it. And see, because I want folks to know that David did beat Goliath. You understand? And, 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 and it's not by, by, by Steve Miller, but it's by his power. And see, it'll be his power. You know what? It was his power that allowed David to beat Goliath. And like I said, I'm going up against the most wealthiest commission. The person only commission. She, she, she had more wealth than any of them. That's right. More wealth. And, 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 and my point of this, and she's done very, very well. She have, she have really, really increased the family's portfolio. No answers but survive it. But enough is enough. And, and that's my attitude. And, and, and I'm looking forward to my day in court. And, 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 and I will rejoice after it. And I'm looking forward in November the fourth, uh, so that we can say enough is enough.
Let me ask you, Steve, um, the citizens also requested that people who serve on citizen boards be citizens of Daytona Beach. And you, so you're currently serving on a board. They also, uh, would like to see those citizens who serve on boards have a little more, uh, you know, still they can make recommendations, but be taken seriously. Does that make sense to you for citizens to be requesting? Because Daytona, um, Port Orange and Orange Beach would not allow anybody who lives outside of the city to serve on any of their boards.
But see, we are different than Port Orange and Orange Beach. Those are people who try to run Daytona Beach. Because of their money interest. And their money is a whole lot, lot, speaks louder than, than the citizens. And that's unfortunate. I, I would look forward to changing that myself, Gwen. I really would. And, uh, I can support that, definitely. No answers but survive it. I think the city belongs to its citizens, to its, its residents, not the business people. Business people should not dictate how we run our city.
And you've mentioned about the beach that you support, uh, driving on the beach. So do you support those who are saying that let the people vote? Cause I certainly do.
Absolutely. I want the people to vote. See, some people don't want folks to vote. They wanna be able to manipulate a couple of individuals uh, to do what they want them to do. But I want the people, let the people decide. In fact, if the people decide, then what could we say about it? That's what the people want. But you know what? They don't wanna put it on the ballot because they know that the people gonna tell them, don't touch my beach. Period. They know that.
But the people were the ones who voted and decided that they didn't want the little, every little city controlling the beach. They wanted it to be a county managed beach. You know, so let the people decide then how they, what they're gonna do in terms of.
In fact, Daytona was very upset with that vote too. They was, they'd be tired. Like Tipton retired after that. I'm serious.
Well, that really wasn't why he, uh, and I, and I do a shout out to him too because I see that he's being recognized. He really was a great, I feel, city manager. And, uh, some of the ideas he had, if they were, had put them in the place. We'd be looking at a vibrant downtown because we'd have people there and condos and all kinds of stuff.
I wonder who was the mayor when we gave that money to, uh, Jack White?
Oh, well, we, well, Tipton was nowhere around. I can tell you that.
I said, who was the mayor? I didn't say who was the city manager.
I think that was Glenn.
Glenn Richard? No, Glenn Richard's a businessman. He would never allow Jack White to end up with a two point two million dollars for a twenty thousand dollar investment. Not how much we paid for those cars.
Well, you people do your research. Uh, but I think, uh, in terms of Steve, because you're a person who looks at the problems and comes up with solutions, uh, what should we do in terms of coming up with these better paying jobs? Aren't you?
And go out and recruit. Go out and recruit. Just like they wanna say we have no funds for our leisure service program. You know what? I think politicians bring the bacon home. We got very powerful congressman. You know what? Have we asked him to help us do anything? Have we asked our legislators what we need to do to help with these children out here? You know what? Have we asked them to help us with some of the special vet funding that we are not supporting? You know, when I was on the commission, Gwen, we used to have this internal law control agreement with these other cities. Where they should provide, you know, law enforcement to help us to control the crowd. What happened? We're doing it all by ourselves now.
Well, we're still signing them, but the other wa- cities are the ones that are benefiting. They're, they're not having to buy any equipment because we're right there, Johnny, on the spot with all of our equipment that our taxpayers have paid for. Uh, we're right there to help them all. So they don't have to have the personnel, they don't have to have the, the equipment because Daytona Beach is providing it as a part of this agreement with all of them.
A part of we utilize if I ask them to help us with some of our special vet. You know what? One of the, we were one of the few cities, I really think, of our size to have as many personnel and law enforcement. You know, I understand that we needed it. I've seen our cover stats. I've seen the latest. The numbers look wonderful. Crime is truly gone down in Daytona Beach. And see, wouldn't it be nice to be able to work your way out of having so much money to be spent for law enforcement? The crime is down. Why do we need to continue to increase more and more individuals? They're asking for eight new law enforcements to man the schools so they get to know the kids. If they had, if they had after-school programs, they could get to know all of these kids. In fact, they can help Johnny learn how to read. They can help Johnny stay out of trouble. See, instead, we're paying money so they can lock Johnny up, you know? In fact, we have some awesome equipment there. You know, we, we have ticket readers all over the city. They can actually follow a stolen car all over the city. They can take pictures of them, know what they're looking for.
Oh, yeah. We got videos everywhere.
We got, we got videos all over the neighborhood. So my point of it is, I think it's time for us to begin to be a little bit more proactive. And see, question something else. And then even though I, I kinda mentioned it, accountability. And see, Gwen, something else, and then even though I, I kinda mentioned it, accountability, fiscal accountability. You know what, when you don't have much money, you have to watch how you spend your money. And see, that's what commission's supposed to be about. They supposed to watch the money, and nobody's watching the money.
And when your people don't have a whole lot of money, you shouldn't be just upping the, you know, the rate on them.
Exactly, and they, they support all these big, rich individuals, you know, who give you these accolades. That's not what we need. And like I said, I think a new day is coming, really. Help is on the way, Daytona Beach. We gonna do this thing, and we gonna do this thing together. Yes, we, yes, we can.
Yes, we can, yes, we will, right?
Absolutely, Gwen, and yeah, I'm telling you, and you know what, we also have a homeless situation. And look at these homes that we buying and tearing down. Couldn't we fix them up for the homeless people?
And there are people who want to rehab those facilities, but the city keeps saying no.
And Gwen, I've been walking, there's a lot of vacant property out here. And this money that we been giving this couple, two million dollars, you know how much property we could buy for two million dollars? You know, there's a couple hotels that relatively nobody in. You know, the one that we just sold, we could've used that building, got the funding from federal government and state, and help these individuals who have, who, who have lost their jobs and now are the homeless. And see, a lot of people are homeless by choice, some are homeless because they have, in fact, a lot of have mental issues. Gwen, and that's the, why don't we use some of the law enforcement budget to help and bring somebody in to counsel folks? I don't think the, 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 we should be locking everybody up. Why can't we help our, our neighbors? You know what, why, let's find out whether or not this guy choose to be homeless, whether or not he have a mental ill, illness, or whether or not he's sick, or, or whatever. At least we need to be able to address those issues.
And not only that, we should have continued to be a part of that coalition that had hired the guy, the consultant who's studying.
Oh, we got out of that?
Solution, I read in the paper that we pulled out of it, because we didn't wanna work with the county and some others.
See, that's what, that's what I'm talking about. We have to begin to work together to solve, uh, a community problem. But they don't want to, because why? They want to control everything.
And you can't let your personal feelings, you know, uh, direct, uh, what should be, you should be looking at, which is the whole global thing of our community, uh.
I'm really disappointed to hear that, really. You know, I really thought that we would be, begin to make progress with those folks without shelter is what they are. They are residents of Daytona Beach without shelter. But what, I've been spending quite a bit of time on the streets myself, and I wanted to find out, you know, how you, and, and, and you know what, the most of them tell me they walk at night because of safety reasons. You know, so they really sleep on the parks during the daytime a little. And, 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 and really, in fact, last night, I was out from twelve o'clock to six o'clock in the morning, walking the city of Daytona Beach. And not lo- not just walking, Gwen, but see, I pray for the city too. Honestly, I, I truly pray that, for the blessings of the Lord on this city. I think that it should be a transformation of Daytona Beach.
And a lot, I, I would share with you, a lot of people, a lot of church members have been praying for the city.
We need prayer, we need prayer. In fact, it, it, it'd be nice to have a, a, a citywide prayer vigil for the city of Daytona Beach and get our churches to, to join us in there, because why?
Which, which we used to do, they stopped doing it a few years away.
Oh, really? So they're anti-Jesus?
National Prayer Day, it's now going on in Port Orange, it's been happening for a few years.
Isn't that amazing? See, then I threw Jesus out of the church, and I threw him out of City Hall, and that's why we have a problem we're having. You know what, I believe in prayer, Gwen, I'm serious. I, you know, the Lord have brought me through all kinds, and that's why I'm able to give back. You know what, I'm serious, you know, I, I've actually battled cancer too. I had kidney cancer several years ago, and the Lord, the Lord healed me from that one as well. And so my point of this, I, I decided, you know what, Steve, you know, you don't have that much time. You really need to go out and do something, and go on to make a difference in somebody's life. So Gwen, I wanna make a difference in somebody's life. I wanna make a difference in some boy or girl. And you know what, it would be nice to be looking at television one day, and one of our kids from our baseball program hit the home run in the World Series, and I'm thinking, man, do you know what, we started that Little League program back there in Daytona Beach in two thousand fourteen, and now look what we got.
Yeah, don't just take, uh, you know, take, take benefit of it once they become good, but know that you helped them along the way.
Develop those kids, absolutely, and nourish those kids.
And maybe, maybe you could do something about the city hall that has become Fort Knox now.
Absolutely.
Where you can only come in through one door.
They, they got locks there on City Hall, it's amazing to me, you know what?
Who are they trying to keep out? I mean.
Isn't that amazing? This is a city hall that got locked. You got, you, you know, it is, that, that's really, what happened?
I have no idea, I, you know, there has not been an incident that would make somebody be afraid. Now, I can remember the time when we were on the commission.
Right, yeah, okay.
Well, yeah, there were fisticuffs in the house, but you didn't have the, uh, nobody was coming in, they were talking about they were gonna get you or anything, so.
Gwen, you, you remember that night when, uh, Colonel Cobble wanted to beat, uh, a bull dasher? I would never forget that. God bless Colonel Cobble.
We had, we had skirmishes along the way, but somehow we survived.
But no, Gwen, really, why have we locked City Hall? Why is it that we got locks on the doors? I used to go in the City Hall door, you know, from the parking lot on the, uh, south side. It's locked these days, I'm saying, my God, this is, it's, the city belongs to the people. And so, but, oh, that's right, J C is the city manager. James Chisholm is the city manager, and, and he's completely out of control.
Steve, I would love for you to give your closing comments, uh, to the listeners, and, uh, and I surely do appreciate you coming on.
Hey, well, you know, Gwen, I was, I, I went to visit my mother today, she had early stages of dementia. Uh, but, but she was good, I told her I was running for city commissioner, and you know what she said? Baby, tell old people that, Mama Sue said, they could vote for you, because I know your heart, and I know that your heart is in the right place. So, my mama told me to tell y'all, my heart is in the right place, because she raised me that way. And like I said, I'm running because I truly need somebody to represent them on the Daytona Beach City Commission. Unfortunately, they can't vote, they need you, I need you, this city needs you. And you know what, together, we truly can make a difference, we really can. Our kids deserve it, the citizens of our community deserve it, and we can make this city a very wonderful place. It is a wonderful place, it's a beautiful place. And you know what, why can't we help one another? You know what, the word of God says, we supposed to help each other. And that's what a community is all about, that's what neighbors are all about. I wanna, I wanna, I want us to be neighbors, I want us to know each other, man, and, and, and you know what? When you hurt, we all should hurt, and when you rejoice, we all should rejoice. So, we need to bring high paying jobs to this community. You need, we need to have people to come and they wanna live in Daytona Beach. They don't wanna come to the Volusia County Halifax area and move to Holly Hill or Ormond Beach or Port Orange. I want them to move to the city of Daytona Beach.
That's, that's make it the city of choice.
It, it, exactly. Our city has not grown in the last ten to twenty years, Gwen. The senses are there, but all these other cities all around us are growing, and I want us to grow. I love the city and that, and, 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 and I'm, I promise you, I will never take from you, I will always give. Because the word of God says, it's better to give than to receive. See, somebody can't, some, my opposition can't say, I have given, but they definitely can't say they've received. You know what, I thank you for this opportunity, Gwen, I'm having a ball, really, I'm, I'm looking forward to the discussion. I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to the ideals, and, and, and you know what? I think we can make a difference, and that's why I'm running. Thank you very, very much for this opportunity.
Well, thank you, Steve, and thank you to all of our listeners. You've been listening to Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. Um, uh, it's so important for all of you to vote. Understand that, uh, there are nonpartisan issues, uh, and, and candidates that are on the August twenty-sixth primary ballot. So, it doesn't matter your party affiliation, you can still find something to vote on, on that ballot for the primary election. And I am grateful to Steve Miller for coming on, and, and, and his seat, uh, the, that he's running for, for City Commissioners Zone Three will be on the November ballot. Uh, and all of those who, uh, don't get the fifty percent plus one for the top two vote getters, uh, unless you're talking about the school board or the judicial, uh, positions, those will be decided definitely on the primary election ballot. So, if you wanna have input on who becomes the next judge, who gets to serve on the school board, uh, you do need to go and vote, uh, your choice on August twenty-sixth or during early voting, or you can also request an absentee ballot and receive that absentee ballot as well. So do please, please vote. If you're not yet registered, then you cannot vote in the primary election, but it's still time that you can register to vote in the November general election. So, uh, remember to join the Truth Radio Show every Thursday starting about six twenty. I moved it up since Big lets me in a little later. As we discuss issues to inform and empower you, our listeners, be sure to go to the website, www.gwenhifintoot.com. Until next time, be informed, be empowered, and stand tall as Steve, I'm sure, is standing tall for that which is right and truthful. Please share your website.
It's voteforsteven, that's S T E V E N Miller. Voteforstevenmiller, that's S T E V E N Miller, M I L L E R. Voteforstevenmiller.
Okay, and it's, uh, Steven is what's on the ballot, your full name?
Uh, it gonna be Steven on the ballot, Steven.
All right, okay, it will be Steven, that's what I mentioned, I didn't wanna be telling an untruth, okay. Uh, voteforstevenmiller.com?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Uh, if you'd like to, uh, assist Steve, um, do go to his website, voteforstevenmiller.com. Um, and, uh, I'm sure he's listed, because he has a business on Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, you know? Out there doing his thing and giving back.
Eight thirty-nine, that's the problem for me.
Yeah, eight thirty-nine, uh, Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard.
George Ingram Boulevard.
George Ingram, that's, okay, okay. All right.
I used to be on, on Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard.
Oh, okay. See, he's, he's moved, uh, moved around, but you stay in the, the hub.
Been, been in the neighborhood for thirty-plus years.
Mm-hmm, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate the fact that you, you do keep giving back. Okay, be sure to vote, August twenty-sixth, be sure to vote in November as well. Again, this is Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards, my guest, uh, Steven Miller on the ballot. Steve Miller, running for City Commissioner, Zone Three in Daytona Beach, Florida. You guys be blessed and have a great week, and stand tall for what's truthful. And don't let anybody fool you on what's not, okay? Check stuff out for yourself, you just be blessed.